Did Barbie? Yep. Okay. Joe, Barbie's ready.
All right. I'd like to call the March 10, 2020 Village Council Regular Meeting to order at 6:30 PM. I'm sure we have a quorum of all the council members except for Robert Epps, who's not here, and we will move forward with the adoption of the agenda. Do we have any additions? Anything you need to...
I would like to add an H of open items. Just to have it on there.
H one or two, three?
No, just H, just a new H for open items. Isn't that what you wanted to do?
After new business.
After new business.
Okay.
And make HI and...
That was really, the open items was really for the work session.
Oh, was it for the work session?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was for every meeting.
No, it's for the work session, so if we, something comes up...
Okay. So just say, "Reese..."
Never mind, I rescind that, sorry. I thought it was for every meeting.
But to your point, that may, we may consider that when we talk about the next work session.
Sorry, I thought you wanted it on the end of the meeting.
We do have that, just in case there's anything, but that usually comes up in council comments.
Trying to help you out, Joe, my bad.
Anything else?
Nope.
Nope. Jamie? All right.
No changes.
So I like the, no changes on the agenda, I'd like to, need a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna stop saying this.
Yeah, it's a...
I've got you trained now.
Next up, we have presidential allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Copy the agenda, or should be, do we have any extra copies of the agenda?
Yeah.
Here, I've got them. All right. Okay. What do we have?
I'm fine.
Well, we don't need them right now, right?
No.
Hey. I'm the good chance speaker.
I've got an extra, so...
Thank you. All right, Rohit's on speaker.
Hello.
Hey Rohit, how are you?
Good, Rohit. Hello.
All right, first up, we have recognition of outgoing council members. I, we can go around the room and stuff, we have two members, outgoing members, Mayor Pro Tem Nick Dispenzere and de facto councilwoman Mary Scoot that is no longer at their post, and I figured I'd leave it up to any of you to, if you have any comments you want to say for either of them.
I said my deal at December, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good.
Jamie? Okay. I had a few words I'd like to say about Nick, and just put it on the record, and I could submit this as, for the record for the community. I was hoping Nick would be here so I could present this in person, and I know we've had some back and forth where he's not been able to attend, so, and I do need to reach out to him and check in on him, but I'd just like to say a few words. I'd like to take a moment to recognize former Mayor Pro Tem Nick Dispenzere for his service to our community. Nick has served the Village of Marvin in many capacities over the last 12 years, including serving as a councilman from 2007 to 2011. He was our mayor of the Village of Marvin from 2010 to 2013. I was honored to be sworn in by him back in 2013. Yes, he actually chose to come back in 2015. In fact, I know he had been urged by others, including me, as he was and still is well-respected in the community. The other benefit of having someone like Nick back was he also knew so much about our past. Knowing this past history, I can assure you was invaluable to myself, other council members, staff, and other constituents. I was honored to run with him, running as a candidate for councilman and as a team back in 2015. We knocked on a lot of doors together, and it was a great opportunity for me to get to know him on a personal level. He is a man of faith in his Catholic community, and he also loves his family, especially his grandchildren. I know if you had to give him a phone call, I can't tell you how many times for me that he had to call me back because he was tending to his grandchildren, either picking them up or running them off to faith formation, or just enjoying their company. Family always came first with Nick, and it's always been his focus and priority. Nick also currently serves as a member of the Knights of Columbus at St. Matthews as well, where he also gives back to the larger community, and we thank him for that. He's also served as the planning board in the past and has always made himself available to serve as liaisons to village boards and/or committees, organizations such as CRTPO. For over the past year, Nick has also shared with us some health issues that he's been dealing with. I can say now that he and I spoke about him, you know, I can say this comfortably now, that we spoke about him actually stepping down because he was concerned if he was going to be able to make it, but he chose to stick it out to perform his duties to this town as mayor pro tem. I appreciate his fortitude and courage to continue through these personal challenges. We are still praying for you and your continued good results you are receiving. I was hoping he'd be here, that we truly appreciate his willingness to observe this community, and on behalf of all the staff and council of the Village of Marvin, I wanted to personally say thank you for his past efforts and all of his advice and direction over the years. He's truly made a difference and has been a big part of keeping Marvin the special place it is. And we had a small token of our appreciation with this plaque that reads, "Appreciation for your dedicated service and commitment to the village, council, and mayor's. Years of service on council from 2007 to 2011. Years of service as mayor from 2010 to 2013. Years of service on council from 2015 to 2019." On this, well, this was supposed to be in January of 2014, "Mayor and council on behalf of the grateful citizens of the Village of Marvin." So we thank him for that, Nick. Sorry you can't be here, and we do have a small gift card for you as well. And with that, I will say thank you, Nick, and we will make sure if we can get staff to get these to the two individuals. So thank you for, to be back. Next up, public comment here, did we have anyone that signed up?
No, sir.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next report, administrator's report, Christina?
Yeah, I have a couple of items. I'm actually gonna ask to table the, after the out-of-district call process to the work session, I'm still waiting on Jay Shol to get back with me on that. If you don't mind trying to facilitate that, I sent him an email a couple of weeks ago and I haven't been responding.
He's gonna have some, I know, I saw an email today, he was out tomorrow, he'll be back Friday, I think, so I know he's out a little bit this week.
And then there is another issue that's pretty, pretty serious. We've been having an issue on the Greenway, it's been flooding out, it's actually been flooding major portions of it. I had a video, we had some technical difficulties, so we couldn't pull it up. If y'all want to see the video, we can get it emailed to you.
Barbie sent it to us.
Okay, great. So it's in your email. Basically, we need to get it addressed as soon as possible, and...
Hadn't they had been working with DOT, like, didn't they, like, dig over there and do a bunch of stuff?
Yes, and we've been working on...
They can't figure out, like, where it's coming from, and...
No, we can't. And AMT actually came out and assessed it, and the point that we've gotten to is we need to dig a few ditches, and we need to appropriate some funds for that. I'd asked Mike a couple of days ago how much it was gonna be, and he said, you know, nothing more than a couple thousand dollars, so we'll get some estimates, and what we'll do is appropriate some contingency.
Well, because it's gonna ruin the Greenway, and then we're gonna end up having to pay more, right?
Yes.
Okay. And people can't use it and get through.
Wanted to bring it to your attention, let you know that we are going to proceed with a budget amendment to get, to make it happen, and to hire someone to kind of get this emergency repair done.
Where's it at exactly?
Yeah, where's this, I'm looking at it right now, is this in the park?
No, it's over by the elementary school, going from the elementary school over to the corner of Joe Carner and Marvin School Road. It's like in all that treeed area.
Oh, okay.
And it's just, it's really bad, and it's not the first time that it's happened, because I've had people call me...
Okay, so on Marvin School Road?
Yeah.
It gets flooded, huh?
Oh, it's, it's like, it's bad.
Wow.
And this is after...
There's the walkway.
That doesn't make sense, that that's...
I mean, and it happened, this happened, I don't know, towards maybe the beginning, or maybe the end of last school year, and AMT or DOT came out and dug some stuff, they couldn't figure out, like, why it wasn't draining off, and so...
So we apologize to the public that it's taken this long, we were assessing a couple different residential properties to see where the water was flowing from, and we can only assess it when the water comes, so it's taken a while for us to figure it out, but we are here now, and we just want to get it addressed, and we'll go through the appropriate process with the budget to make it happen.
So we're sending engineers over there?
Yeah.
We have, all right, okay. Looks like something could be addressed with, like, a French drain or something, tied into some other, but that's all, I don't know what they have over there, septic or...
You wanna go over there and take a look and see if we can come out?
So the next item is the roundabout conduit. If you recall, I don't know, two years ago, when we put the roundabouts in, we decided we weren't gonna run water and electric, we were just gonna put the conduit in. So with the sub drainage requirement, they are gonna use that conduit for the water. So we would have to come back in, I just wanted, this is just an FYI, wanted to let y'all know that we would have to come back in if we were to do electric and bore electric today.
They couldn't do it at the same time?
No. It was not part of the contract with the round, and I don't know if we'll do electric there, I'm just letting y'all know.
I think we only want to water, because I don't think we can put lights in there. Because I think we asked.
We could do solar if we wanted.
Yeah, but we're just gonna do, okay, but that's not gonna be electrical.
No.
But, yeah, if you wanted to be assured, because most solars don't necessarily last for very long, but if you had some trees in there that you wanted to do some uplighting in, I think that may be...
Yeah, but they told us we can't put trees in there.
I don't know.
Yeah, well, that's what they, that is what they told...
But it's okay, but it's okay to put trees up in Charlotte?
I agree, I agree.
It doesn't make any sense.
I agree with you, this is what, this is what the tree planting people with DOT told Park, Rec, and Greenway, and I told Park, Rec, and Greenway the next time that they met with those people to figure out what we can put in there, I wanted to be at that meeting.
Well...
Because I think it's ridiculous.
I would bring pictures of what's over by the...
Yeah, no, yeah.
So just wanted to let you know that, just in case it comes back up, and that's all I have to report with you there.
What, can I ask a question? Where are we with the drains?
They are doing the work during spring break to alleviate some of the traffic concerns.
Okay, so it's definitely gonna be done over spring break.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Christina. Planner's report, from the distance, Rohit, are you still with us?
Yes. I would like to say that we, can you hear me well?
Um, we're working on it.
Not, not, not well.
Okay, I'll try to speak loudly then.
Okay, that's good.
So, I would just like to say that we got our money's worth for this conference, pretty much in the first five minutes of walking in the door, because we met the person who would be our main street coordinator for Union County Towns, and he's excited to find out that we're looking into developing a downtown, he's willing to meet with us whenever we can make a meeting to talk about pretty much all the steps from ground zero to having a downtown.
Is he a local guy?
Um, yeah, he's local, he's the, he's the main street manager for Union County and a couple of...
Yeah, three or four counties.
Yeah, three or four counties in the area, but he's, he would be our representative, and he also works for the Department of Commerce, so this is not a consultant, he's, he's an employee of the state who would be coming to us, you know, at no charge to us, and just guiding us through the process from end to end, and he's excited to have a meeting with us, you know, as soon as we can, so I'm looking, not next week, but the week after that, myself and John, and perhaps Christina should sit in that meeting, but I'd also like to extend that maybe a couple, council members or mayor would like to sit in that meeting as well.
Yeah, for the first meeting, Rohit, is he just, is he suggesting just maybe a couple councils, or does he suggest more of a formal meeting, like a special meeting? What are you, what are your thoughts on, what is his thoughts on that?
Uh, yeah, probably this need to be, to keep it cool. Um, yeah, it doesn't, it wouldn't have to be a special meeting, this, if one or two council members came, it would be mostly informational for you to also, you know, find out and ask questions if you have any about what the process are, what the process is, and any steps that, you know, I didn't know about, none of us know about, but he knows because he is the coordinator for all the main streets in the three or four county area.
So the reason for my question about if he was local or not, if he's, you know, three, four hours away, it's gonna be more challenging to get him here, but if he's a Union County resident, more likely to invite him to a regular meeting after we discuss the basic, because that, you know, there may be a lot of questions from a lot of people, that's why I'm wondering if...
Right, right, so this is more of a process meeting, and he's, he's based out of Lincolnon, so he's not three, he's not three or four hours...
He's an hour, an hour...
No, Albemarle, sorry.
An hour.
Forty-five.
Yeah.
He's an Albemarle, actually.
Oh, okay.
Sounds correct.
You can carpool with Christina.
Um, yeah, anyway, he's very excited to come by and see, see that we are guided throughout the process, so this can be just a casual meeting.
All right, then I would say the first one, my opinion is you guys do it with Christina and John, and then come back to us with some other information after you guys meet the first time.
Sure.
But let me know, because I'll probably come too.
Awesome. Tell them the wrong, tell them the wrong date, Rohit.
Great, that's great, so, good stuff the first day.
Yeah, other than that, you know, the conference has been very, you know, incredibly amazing for, you know, in terms of what we've learned and the connections we've made, we've talked to consultants, other downtowns, where it was definitely worth our trip, and it was just day one of two, so can't wait to give you a full debrief.
Very nice. And anything else?
Um, other than that, I have nothing to report.
Okay. Wash your hands.
Absolutely. There is a hand sanitizing station here, and it's being fairly...
Do all the touches, that's what they're recommending, so. Great job, well, thank you for calling in, and do we need him to stay on, or?
Uh, yes, I have a couple of items on the agenda, I'll stay on for it.
All right, well, thank you for that. Next up, we have Rose's report.
Oh, wait, hold on, sorry.
Wait, go back.
Sorry. Hey, Rohit, can you update, will you update council on that possible land?
Um, oh, yes, I've been talking to Pulte about, about the potential to, for them to donate the floodplain area where they're building the townhomes on Ray Road, the townhomes at Autry Park is what this development is called, and there's about 17 acres that, that could be used as a passive recreation park. Now, we're pretty early in the discussion stage, but they've, they've agreed that since it's not buildable for them, that they would be willing to consider donating that 17 acres to us to use as a park.
And where's that at?
And this is that, this is that, it's on Ray Road at the top near Amber Meadows and Tullamore, by the county line.
By the county store.
Yeah.
And then it's D townhouses, it's that area right behind that.
Right before you get to the bridge.
So then Rohit, that would also help our connectivity from Tullamore Phase III to Amber Meadows.
Right. Yes, that's correct, because...
And all that area back there is floodplain, so they can't build on it.
Okay.
Right. That was what triggered the discussion originally, when the Amber Meadows HOA came in and said, "We really want this connection, it's in the county," so I said to them, you know, "Can you donate at least that portion?" Then they said that they're willing to donate the whole, the whole common space to Marvin.
So because it's in the floodplain, that walkability connected, so that'd be something like they did up by Trigger Joe's, that you put in the wooden...
Yes, yes, exactly what we're talking about.
The wooden bridges, and then you can get flooded, and once it's fine again, that's great.
That's exactly what we're talking about.
Perfect.
Yes.
Very exciting.
All right, I'll update you when I have updates.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, next up, we have Rose's report, Christina?
Yeah, I just wanted to let everyone know that DOT is still waiting to get the fatality report back on the Joe Carr incident, so we're still waiting on the, the assessment on traffic calming devices in that area before that report, to come, for that report to come back.
So they're waiting for it from State Highway Patrol?
And that's all I have to report, okay?
All right. Thank you, and next up, deputies' report.
So Stephen is actually out sick, I had asked his lieutenant, is it, is that your title, to come in and just represent, he's not prepared to answer any questions in terms of the report, so unless there's specific questions, we can get that to Stephen after the fact, and we can get those questions addressed.
Yeah, but I saw Stephen out on Saturday afternoon pulling cars, and I loved it, I thought it was awesome. I waved at him, I said, "Hey!"
Yeah, I'm...
That was not speeding going out Joe Carr.
I'm actually a Joe Carr, yeah.
Were you with him?
No, the Wesley Chapel deputy was with him.
Okay.
Did they pull how many?
Like thirty cars that day.
Saturday afternoon, they're out tooling around.
Yeah, I saw him on a school day, initially, they were on Marvin Road, which I thought was good, because that also is another big complaint, just south of where, or north of where you're at.
Yeah, he sits there a lot too, which is good.
Yeah, so...
So you never know, Marvin citizens, just because it's a weekend, doesn't mean he's not out here.
Yeah, I watch it. Um, great, thank you for being here. The planning board chair report, is John there, with you, Rohit?
Yes, he's there, yes.
Does he want to talk?
Uh, I don't, I don't think so. I'm not sure that, you know, I've got anything on your agenda that's, that's real pertinent right now. Like I said, I have to reinforce what Rohit said, that this is, is, we're gonna come away with a lot of bullet points and contacts. We won't come away from here as experts, but, you know, have an awful lot of resources when we leave here.
That's great, that's great, and thank you, by the way, for the meeting yesterday, I think it was very productive, and it kind of put us on the same page, so thank you for being there with your crew.
Yeah, and, yeah, I want to make sure, regarding yesterday, that we're going in the direction that you think we need to go, and that's the way we came away from it, that we think that we're going where you want us to.
Yeah, I think, I think that was the case, and I think that's what we got from that as well, so, appreciate that.
Um, hey, John, can you just say for, just whoever's listening, that we, about the open position on planning board?
Uh, yeah, I'm not going anywhere. No, I'm not.
Not you.
The vacancy, John, the vacancy.
Yeah, 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 I, I know.
Not you, John, no, I just want, I just want the public to know, I just want the public to know.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about the meeting, I'm not going anywhere from the meeting right now.
She's saying she wants you to speak about how the vacancy is.
Yes, yes, okay, yes, the, you know, you've got, we've got three members, I think it is, that were up for reappointment, and Tom Trob said he's too busy to, to continue forward, so we've got a vacancy. I know, I reached out to one person that I know, to see if they would, would volunteer, but they said no, and so I don't have any other resources at this moment.
Okay, so just if the public's listening, that we've got it open on the planning board, and if you're interested to fill out an application, and Barbie, if we can put that back out on MailChimp, and then can we throw it on Nextdoor and any of the other social media that we have?
So do we still allow a, I don't know, that's for PR and G, a person from outside the...
That's just for PR and G.
For PR and G.
But, but, but if you do the ETJ, yes, you would be able to have, you have to have somebody from the outside.
Okay, so that...
So, yeah.
In the area, it's presented.
Yeah, we may, we may have another opening at that point, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So, yeah, whatever social media we have, Barbie, if we can put that out on there, and then also your website, I saw you send it out on MailChimp again, but your website, I know that's not planning board, but that's, anyway, sorry. Okay, so we've got one opening on planning board that we need to fill, do we need to reappoint the people that were up? Have we done that?
Not yet, you'll need to do that at your next regular meeting, I guess, I mean, because...
Should we put it on the agenda?
Yeah, I'll put it on the agenda, I didn't get a response from everyone to know when we're actually gonna be reappointed, so it'll be on there. And, and we can probably do it on the work session, would that be something that we could do on the work session?
Cool.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Uh-huh.
All right, next up, the PR and G chair report, Andy, who's not here, so, anything to report?
And he didn't have anything to report.
Yeah, we've got our meeting with them on Thursday at 10:00 AM here in two days, so we're gonna go a bunch of good stuff then, they've got a good agenda for us.
Great. All right, thank you all for the reports and updates, and next up on the C is the consent agenda, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, and then next up. Next up, we have public hearing, D1, hold a public hearing, consider the Texas Amendment for Stormwater Ordinance, OR-2020-03-01, for sections 150.065 and 151.062. I need to...
Motion to...
Motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir.
I'll need a motion to close.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, Rohit, open this up to you, I guess.
Yes, uh, so this ordinance amendment has been triggered by the discovery that our ordinance requires all developments to have stormwater detention, but that requirement is kind of overkill, and instead, we are changing the ordinance, and after very thorough discussions with NCDQ, I've crafted an ordinance here with their guidance, they've seen the ordinance, and they said, "This is, this is compatible with the state regulation that 24, if, if, if an development disturbs more than an acre, and 24% of it, not counting what already exists, is impervious, then it should require stormwater detention." And if the development disturbs less than an acre and is not part of a larger common plan, then it should not need a stormwater detention. So that's the ordinance that's being presented, and the memo should explain every, pretty much the steps that took to get to this point. I have nothing else to say to that, I would recommend approval.
And this one came to chart.
Um, I think it was my council.
So, Rohit, can you just speak to, just briefly about the history of the planning board, because I know they, just, just their activity in action taking on the initial stormwater ordinance, I know that it was initially declined, and we had went back and spoke to council a little bit about it, and went back and modified it just slightly, so can you just speak to that just briefly, for a second?
Yeah, sure. Originally, the, the stormwater ordinance that was proposed was a lot less strict, and it didn't match the state. We were, we were having a context of trying to get the village hall out of the stormwater ordinance, and we phrased it in a way that you could build a development in sections, and you could disturb less than an acre each phase, but now, with the addition of the phrase that, that, the part of that says it's not part of a common plan development, so if, if a development is part of a larger development, then it would combine what was built in the previous phases as part of that acre and as part of that 24%, and so now that that language included, the planning board voted that they would approve, recommend approval of the ordinance, and it would not exempt village hall as it's currently proposed because it's disturbing more than an acre.
So as the, as the ordinance is presented tonight, the planning board has, has reviewed and recommended approval of said ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
And John is here saying yes also.
So pending Cancel's review and adoption of this ordinance, they would need to adopt a consistency or inconsistency statement depending on which route they want to go?
Yes, and the consistency or inconsistency statement is in the memo.
So if Cancel is ready to take action, if there's no questions on it, then you would just need to look at those two statements. If you're going, going to adopt it, you would read the consistency statement. If you're not, you would read the inconsistent. So I thought the reason we were trying to do this was to get Village Hall out of the stormwater, but it's still sitting in there?
Right. Ultimately, the DEQ wanted us to have the consistency with their requirements. Also, the Planning Board wanted our ordinance to be consistent with DEQ. And what DEQ is saying is that you have either, no, you have one acre of disturbance or 24% impervious. And our current Village Hall plan did not get under that one acre disturbance. So even though the original, uh, the prompting of this ordinance rewrite was to, uh, to one, try to see if we can exempt our Village Hall and also change it so that it doesn't say all developments require stormwater. Eventually, we did get it, I, I, I had a thorough discussion, you know, back and forth several times with DEQ with this ordinance. And they said this was the, uh, you know, agreeable, consistent language. But unfortunately, the consistent language with DEQ does not exempt our Village Hall because we could not get it under an acre of disturbance.
Okay, okay. So if we're being consistent, then we've got to change, so two and B in the red is what we are adding to both of these ordinances?
Right. And the reason why it's listed twice is because we do just have that stormwater ordinance listed twice, once in our subdivision section and once in our zoning section. So I, just for?
So that'll be something that's cleaned up, right?
Yeah, that's going to be cleaned up by the code organization firm later.
Rohit, this is Chaplin. And just to confirm, if the development is less than an acre, even if it disturbs more than 24%, it's still going to be exempt, correct?
Yes, because the ordinance says it has to do both. It has to be disturbing and a more than acre and, uh, 24% impervious, not including existing structures.
And if there's a 10-acre development and it doesn't disturb much at all, it only disturbs 15%, it's going to be, or, I'm using 15 as a random number below 24, then it would be exempt as well because it's just not creating that much of an impact?
Um, as long as it's disturbing less than an acre in total. So maybe that random number is 9%, then yes, it would not require stormwater.
Well, it says if it's disturbing an acre or more and having a net increase.
Right.
Exceeding 24.
So, so disturbance is like grading, any grading regardless of if it's impervious or not. Whereas impervious is going to be like a building or a parking lot or sidewalk or something. So there's two components to this.
Okay.
Are you comfortable with this, Chaplin?
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure that we don't get some large development by that "and" language. Disturbing an acre or more of land and having a net increase impervious built upon area exceeding 24%. It, it looks like you have to have both of those with this new language.
Right.
To trigger. So if you, if you only have the, uh, impervious built on the area of 20% and it's a 10-acre development, you're going to be exempt.
But here's the thing, if you build 20% of a 10-acre development, that's, you're disturbing two acres, which is more than one. So you would qualify for both things and then require stormwater. Does that make sense, like in the context of your example?
Yeah, I'm just reading disturbing an acre or more of the land and having a net, net increase. So you have to have both.
So should it be or?
Right.
Yeah, I wonder if we have to have an or?
And?
No, it can be, it can be and because, um, when you build something impervious, that's considered disturbance too. So in your example, if you're, um, building 20% of that 10-acre tract, um, well, 20, no, you're, let's, let's put this the other way. 20, yeah, you're, so 20% would be, yeah, you're right, actually, 20% would be under that 24%. So you would not require stormwater for that. I see what you're saying now, yeah.
That's what I wanted to confirm.
Yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying now, that's right.
Or slash or?
Or should it be or?
Well, it depends on what you're trying to get. And that's what I was trying to confirm. If you have a 10-acre development and right now it says and having a net increase of 24%. So you have to have both of those. So if you have a 10-acre development and it only impacts, uh, the impervious build upon it 20%, either it's 10 acres. I'm reading this as you wouldn't have to have a permit.
So it needs to be and or?
Okay, yes, that's, I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, I'm quickly reading through the email that I got from the DEQ person. And, uh, just to confirm that it is and.
And it makes sense if you've got a 10-acre development that doesn't have a huge impact. If I just build a small house in the middle of 10 acres and you're not going to get around it because it's the common plan of development. If I've got 10 acres and I'm building a small house in the middle, I shouldn't have to get a stormwater permit.
Right.
And I think that's intent.
The intent, yes.
I wanted to clarify that that was.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I just sent him that exact, uh, verbiage and he agreed that that, and in the end, after several back and forths, he, he agreed that that was the consistent, uh, language, so.
And I wanted the board to, to understand that.
Yeah.
But that may be the intent, but if somebody reads it the way that you were reading it and we're getting like?
It has to be an acre and 24%.
And 24% impervious.
Okay, so you're good with it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right, does someone want to, uh, do we want to approve this then? Ordinance? And if so, um, have you read the consistency statement? Is that what's required?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, I'm good with it.
All right, someone want to make a motion?
Okay, so I want to make a motion to approve the, uh, text amendment to the stormwater ordinance 150.065A2 and 151.062B with the consistency statement of the Village of Marvin Council finds the action to amend the village's zoning to be consistent with the adopted 2004 Land Use Plan. The 2004 Land Use Plan calls to, quote, "to enhance Marvin's reputation as an equestrian and environmentally friendly community," end quote. The proposed change will not reach intended goal of allowing development that is environmentally friendly, therefore being reasonable in the public interest.
All right. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, unanimous. Thank you, Rohit.
Thank you.
The next step on the, uh, public hearings is D2, discussion consideration for?
We just did that.
Unfinished business.
There's a second one.
That's what we just approved. We held a public hearing and then we just did the text amendment for it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm reading it, my, my bad, sorry about that, okay. Uh, next up, Village Hall?
Just wanted to report that we are still continuing to assess numbers. Uh, Chaplin and I have met and were prepared to go over some of the, the items that Cancel had discovered or had discussed at the previous meeting. Um, I don't, I don't have any further input other than another item that we will talk about later. I don't know if you have any input?
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you, Christina.
Any comments, questions from Cancel?
Nope.
From Village Hall?
Nope.
Thank you. Next up, we have unfinished business. Discussion consideration of TUP number 20-12382, renewal of Marvin Gardens' construction trailers. Rohit?
Okay, so, um, in the memo and, uh, attached documents, you'll see that I have the, the TUP. It's the same TUP that was presented at the September 10th meeting. And the reason is that our ordinance requires TUPs for construction trailers and storage to be renewed every six months. So today is the six-month anniversary of that construction, uh, trailer approval. And since it's not a new TUP, I was advised by zoning administrators that, um, it does not need its own public hearing. It just needs a review of the council to see that, uh, the construction has been progressing diligently. And, um, you probably already know, but the construction has indeed been progressing diligently. I reviewed the site, the engineers reviewed the site, our roosters re-regreeted the site. And we found everything to be compliant, um, and, um, construction has been, uh, not been causing that much disturbance to the immediate neighbors. And so the findings of fact are in the, um, the application itself. Um, but I, uh, I guess I want to ask Chaplin if, uh, in the case that this is not a new TUP, but is a renewal of the TUP, do, uh, the council need to review the findings of fact again or just renew the TUP?
I, I would go ahead because you could have changed conditions or circumstances and it's pretty quick to go ahead.
Sure.
And do the three findings. And you've got those in the memo. And if they're ready, they're the, uh?
So, yeah, I got it, yeah.
And you also have conditions, uh, in your memo. If you pass it, if you pass the three findings with the recommendation, there are also four conditions.
Yes, the conditions are exactly the same as the previous time that it was, uh, approved originally.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion. Should I go make a motion?
Are we done discussing?
We can't after we make the motion. So I'd like to make the motion to approve the temporary use permit number 20-12382, renewal of construction office and storage trailers at Marvin Gardens. Um, and we make the following findings of fact. One, the proposed temporary use will not materially endanger public health, welfare, and safety. The proposed temporary use will not have a substantial negative effect on adjoining proj?
No, 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 that's not it. It's the recommendations is down below.
I thought I had to find the findings of fact first.
Yeah, we do. Let's, let's do the first one. Making finding that the proposed temporary use will not materially.
I did that one.
Yeah, and, and what?
Oh, oh, no, sorry.
We're voting each one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So on the first one, not material endangerment to public welfare and safety, uh, further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
That the proposed temporary use will not have a substantial negative effect on adjoining properties?
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
The proposed temporary use is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance and preserves its spirit.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And then do I need to do the?
You can incorporate them by reference if you would like.
Okay, and then?
The four recommendations set forth in the memo.
What do you want me to say?
I'd like to approve the temporary use permit subject to the following conditions.
Recommendations?
And you can just incorporate the four in the memo if you'd like, or you can read them.
Okay, so I'd like to approve the temporary use permit for the construction trailers at Marvin Garden. It's storage construction at Marvin Gardens', um?
With the following conditions?
Contingent on them following the following content, conditions. The temporary use permit shall expire on March 10th, 2020?
Oh, well, that should be, uh, September 10th, 2020 now, sorry.
September 10th, 2020, unless an extension is applied for and received prior to the expiration date. The lighting shall be in conformance with the Marvin and Slate ordinance and shall be directed away from any single-family homes. At the end of the construction, the office trailer or storage shall be removed. And the temporary office shall only be used for coordinating construction and not as a sales office for commercial tenants or for lots in the residential portion.
All right, further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, um? And that's the, uh, next subject is unfinished business. And I didn't know this was under unfinished business. I thought this would be new business, but we'll see where it goes. Discussion consideration of text amendment ordinance to Chapter 90, Animal Control, to add regulation regarding dogs on a leash.
Okay, so I, I, uh, I've been directed to, uh, draft a ordinance that would require that residents would have, uh, their dogs on a leash when they're outside. Um, but for some thoroughness, it also includes that if they're on their own property, they should be within a fence or invisible fence. This ordinance that is being presented is, uh, borrowed and adapted from the city of Charlotte. And, uh, I've found that it covers, you know, all the edge cases. Basically, if you're outside, a dog should be on a leash. And if you're, if it's on your property, if it's not inside your house, then it should be in a fence or invisible fence. Um, the direction was given to me from Christina, so if she has any comments, um, I think she should speak to it. But this would just append a new section to the section that we already have on animal control.
Okay.
So I, I'd like to just kind of chime in if that's okay, um, before you do, Christina, but I think I reached out to you initially. We've had numerous complaints and, you know, obviously you always, last thing we wanted to do is create more rules for the town. But in our neighborhood, we've had repeated issues with one individual who has, um, it has become a very big concern where kids have been nipped at and stuff. The kids are now, when they get off of the bus, instructed to run to the closest porch because of this particular dog and the fact that the homeowners have been approached numerous times. So I, I did start with, have you talked to the owners? Apparently the owners are not particularly cooperating with that. So, and every time the officers have been called, their response is there's no leash law in Marvin. So there's nothing they can do, so.
So is, is this a situation where the dog is in the yard and running out into the street?
No, the dog has been, uh, we'd have enough, heads up, I probably could have had people come and speak on, on this. But the dog, uh, my understanding, has actually entered other neighbors. They have no invisible fence, they have no way of, of.
So it's leaving their own property?
It's leaving their property and it's chasing kids, it chases runners. The last time it actually attacked, or it chased a, um, an au pair with a, a six-month-old baby in a, in a carriage where they had to run to the porch. Um, and one gentleman who I talked to said he actually was cornered by, in the dog, in his own garage. The dog was, came into his garage. So the dog is, I guess there's some issues with the dog as far as being older and maybe seeing, but he is definitely any runner who happens to be running by. So here's what's happened. There have been, how many, Christina, did reports or, there have been numerous calls to this particular home?
There have, and I, I didn't, I wasn't.
There's videotape on, on doorbell rings that they could, they could bring to us, a video of this, of this happening and stuff. But there's no teeth in any of our laws.
Right, no, no, I know, well, you know, we talked about this in the work session. I'm fine having one. My only thing is if you've got like a, like a five-acre piece of property, do, I mean, most five-acre property doesn't have a fence. So do you need to have the dog on a leash when they're on your five-acre property? Per this, you do, if you don't have a fence. So I think we need to be a little bit more specific with, because we are, have large parcels of property in Marvin still. And people aren't going to, you know?
I think the intent, the intent, as well as when it, when the five-acre is adjoining, you know, a public road, we want to make sure that they are contained, you know, near that public road if someone's walking by, no matter how big the lot was. I think that was the intent. Make sure it's contained under the lot in some way, shape, or form, whether it's a fence or, um, leashed, so that it's not.
Well, I mean, if it's leaving your yard, then that's when you have a problem. But as long as it's in your yard, you know, because some dogs will stay on their own. I mean, they know like where they're supposed to go and that. So I think if you, I think if you, I mean, I think you can put in there, I mean, we were talking about in the other text amendment, you know, you've got one acre parcel. So if you've got anything in, you know, an acre or acre and a half and, or larger, you know, then you don't have to have them in fence. Like we, like we have a fence in yards, so I mean, I don't, I mean, but like when the dogs are, you know, when we're in the neighborhood, they're on a leash.
I would agree. I, I would say that, uh, as I explored this and studied this today, that somehow it's written that, um, if, if you have a large parcel of land, whatever it might be, over an acre, two acres, three acres, five acres, and you've got a small dog to fence that in or to tie the dog down when you have it for the, you bought that property or have that property for the benefit of having an animal. Rather than that, I would rather see where the dog would be under supervision of some sort. So that it would say to the effect, something that if you're in a more enclosed community, wherever it might be, uh, Marvin Creek, Firethorn, Innisbrook, and you're in a smaller, more confined area, that there might be some sort of, of restraint on, on the animal. But if it's larger and it's more rural, um, that it would, it would somehow transition to the fact that the dog would be under supervision. Uh, you know, the same thing as, we're not talking about this, but the same thing as if you were to have, uh, you know, a child, you know? So dogs are children to a lot of people. And I'm a dog, you know, lover. And if, if you have a small child. And if, if you have a small child that's not under the supervision of an adult or parent, that child could, could easily go ahead and throw a stone at the neighbor's windows across the street. So you can't restrain the child. And if, this child should have supervision. And I would think the dog would be the same way. I think to take that away, when you have a large piece of property, from an owner to say, I'm out there supervising my animal. Now, does that cover us, in the village of Marvin, does it cover us, in that, that if the dog takes off while the owner is out there, regardless of the size of the property, and, and does some sort of approach, attack, or whatever it might be towards pedestrians on the street, I, I think that that, you know, that the owner would bear responsibility, because you're out there. But that's why, I don't know how it would be fashioned. It would be fashioned that in a, in a small enclosed community, and it may be something, to be honest with you, to be left to the HOAs. I also thought about that and said, maybe the HOAs would take responsibility for this.
But then they've got no way to enforce it. This is, this is-
That's the problem.
Yeah.
My, my, my thought is, if, if, if you're, if you have a pet and if it leaves your property, because some people have dog protection. If you have a pet and you leave your property-
It leaves the property. Or you and the pet.
Right.
Okay.
Then it must be on a leash.
And that would cover your small lots and your big lots, because some dogs don't move.
Now, the second point to this, as I was reading through this, is somewhere in here, it said something about a sign.
Oh, invisible fence.
Invisible fence. I've got an invisible fence, but I don't have, I'm not going to put a sign out.
A lot of major ways won't let you put-
Right. So I don't, but I don't want to be ticky tack on that. So for me, I would rather strike that.
Yeah.
And somehow boil this down to a standpoint, say, if your pet leaves your property, it must be on a leash.
So I think it, it shall be unlawful for any person, owner, or having possession, charge, custody, or control of a dog to keep such dog off the premises unless such dog is under sufficient physical restraint which controls the dog, period. If the physical restraint is used, is a leash requiring the person to control the dog, the person using such restraint must be sufficient age and physical size to restrain the dog. So basically, if they're off the premises, they're restrained. When you've got to have them under, and you, you don't-
Right.
And you aren't governing anything on premises.
So I think if you cut it off, if you cut it off right there, yeah, if you cut it off right there, the rest of this is good.
And then, and you can delete that last sentence about the invisible fence, because you're not governing that, and takes out the sign.
Right.
Yeah.
And it just, it's a point simple. But that then covers the village of Marvin, and it's got enforcement to say, next time that, you know, they call in and say that, they're gonna get it taken.
So from a proof standpoint, there would have to be some sort of, you know, because by the time the officer gets called out there, animal control, video would be helpful?
Picture.
Picture of the dog being on-
Everybody's got pictures of this, whoever's dog is.
Just to make it clear, but, and then, does it, in these, does it typically say, or is this up to animal control takes over at that point? Because it's considered, we have a leash law, they're not following it. So then it goes to warning slash fine, take the dog away?
Yes, that's correct. The, the rest of the section gives the authority to animal control to enforce the, the regulations in the section, in this chapter, sorry, in this chapter, including this new section that you would add.
Animal control, Union County has authority over animal control. So they would enforce any dangerous dog declarations, which is essentially what you're referring to. The problem with what's transpired with this incident is a lot of these calls haven't been made for the dog coming off of the property and charging at an individual in the garage. And I think there was maybe a rumor that it nipped somebody, and, and I, I think that was a rumor. I'm not sure if it was substantiated. But when that happens, the, these individuals have to call animal control and let them know so they can build that report. This ordinance here just basically restrict, like you had mentioned, just restricts the requirement of them being on a leash.
So if, so if somebody's walking around my neighborhood with their dog and the dog's not on the leash, who do I call?
Us.
Okay.
Yes.
Take a picture? If we pass this.
Now, if the dog is charging and-
Then that's animal control.
They would need to call 911 and report that.
Okay, but first they call us if it's just a dog without a leash. Because I know a number of people that are going to probably be upset by this because their dogs are controlled and they walk with them and they never leave. But then they carry a leash with them just in case. But to make it clear, they would call us first if it's just a dog. If it's an aggressive dog or anyone, then, you know, if you can get a photo, great. But then that's an animal control.
So our officer's the only one that can issue citations for the violation of a leash law. Now, if someone calls right now and our officer isn't here, obviously, we can have a sheriff person go out and they would just relay that message to our officer tomorrow if he's here, and he would write that citation.
But when does it get to animal control where they're-
When it's being, when the, is the dog's being aggressive or violent? Or the cat, or the horse, or whatever animal it is?
The ferret.
The ferret. Yeah.
So there's going to be a lot of questions, I'm sure, about what people should do. But I think something, if we were to pass anything, then if we can somehow get that on the web and stuff, that just, did you know, you know, Marvin now has a leash law? And maybe some sort of explanation on that, so we don't get a ton of calls. Because I don't think people are going to know, call Marvin for the leash law, but then call animal control or the sheriff's department for a-
Yeah, we can do that.
Dangerous dog or something like that, so. Are we okay with the language, or you, did you want to change anything?
I had one more word. So I would, physical restraint, I would put hyphen off premises for the caption. So everybody, because people look at that. So now it's an off premises. And the first sentence would read, and all the, and I'll tell you where there are changes. It shall be unlawful for any person, owner, or having possession, charge, custody, or control of any dog. And it used to say to keep, now I'm going to say to allow such dog. And then strike through on his premises or, so the, to allow such dog off the premises unless such dog is under sufficient physical constraint which controls the dog, period. Delete the rest of that sentence, because that's referring to an enclosure. Keep the next sentence, which talks about what is physical control. And then delete the last sentence about the securing closure, which would also include that the fencing, the last two sentences.
The last two.
The last two sentences, I'm sorry, correct.
So do we need to be so specific for a dog?
Yeah. It gets hard if you go outside a dog. We've got to start listing them, and then people aren't going to walk their cats. But I know that there are some people who have the cat regulations, and there are some other people who have called on them. Because one of my mom's friends has a, somebody's cat comes and kills her birds. And she is, um, a spra, long-term raccoon, and she calls, so-
Keep it a dog.
Yeah. You, I mean, you could consider other animals, but then there's also, I think there's probably something for vicious animals and strange animals, or some, also some state law on that.
Okay, all right.
That's gager.
Just asking, I'm just asking.
Do we need to make a motion with those changes?
I mean, with Jamie's ferret, so.
Yes, and you could do, you could do a motion to approve as-
As amended.
As amended.
And then you'll write that up from a legal lease, make sure we have all that.
Yeah, I mean, it's-
And then I'll sign that to be effective whenever you're ready with it, next day or so.
I won't be in the office next day or so. It's going to have to be Monday, or, or if we can get it back tomorrow, I can try and get it up on the-
Glad you got that last sentence out.
On the website sometime tomorrow.
All right, well, whenever. It's just, you know, as long as they can, if the, if the work, if you guys, are you guys all right with all the changes?
Yeah.
I didn't follow really along at the very end of where you were at, because we were jumping and stuff. But all right, I can see the words on it.
All right, so I'm ready. So I'm gonna make a motion to adopt ordinance OR-2020-03-02, appending, or should I say amending?
As amended.
As amended.
No, it says pending here. Should I say as amending?
I think it's pending because it's adding to the end, but you can do it either way.
All right. Not, I'm, appending 90.087, physical restraint to Chapter 90, animal control, as amended. By Chaplain.
By Chaplain, okay. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And that will take effect as soon as I sign that?
If you want, if, if we have some time this evening, if you want to wait and I correct this, and we can put it up there tonight.
Soon as the battery's loaded up and turned on. Thank you. Next up, consider adoption of resolution of intent RS-2020-03-01, resolution of intent and ordinance amending the charter of the village to change the form of government to council manager and allow the mayor to vote on all matters except public hearing for April 7th at 6:30 PM in the village hall.
So, Canel had asked staff to go back and assess some pros and cons to the project that we gave to our interns. So attached in your agenda packets are just some subjective pros and cons that he had gathered up with some resources that he's got listed on that little one-page white sheet with him here. He also went back and assessed the forms of government with a population of 5,000 to 10,000. It's included in your agenda packet, so you can see the percentage of towns that are our size that are council manager form versus mayor council form. I don't know the exact number, but it looks like about 90% of the ones that were assessed were the council manager form, and just a very small amount were the council manager form. We've also included the resolution of intent to amend the charter with the change of the form of government and also to allow the mayor to vote on all matters. Within that resolution, we would be setting the public hearing for the ordinance adoption on Tuesday, April 7th at 6:30.
That needs to be PM.
We need to, yeah, we need to amend that resolution, say 6:30 PM, not AM. Unless somebody wants to show up at 6:30.
Where did, now, where did it say AM? That's number two.
Any questions or concerns from the council on this before we, any changes you'd like to make?
None on my end.
Nope.
Chew that gum up.
I think with the, the fact of the forms of government with a population of, you know, 5,000 to 10,000, we, we're becoming a very growing community. And I think this would be an appropriate transition.
Can we go on?
Nope, I'm good.
So we'll set, we'll be setting a, we need a public hearing for this, is that correct?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so I need a motion to, if there's no further discussion, to set a public hearing?
We need to do two things.
Okay.
Bob's gonna do it.
Yeah, okay. I'd like to consider the adoption of resolution of intent RS-2020-3-01, resolution of intent and ordinance amending the charter of the village to change the form of government to council manager and allow the mayor to vote on all matters and set public hearing for April 7th at 6:30 PM at the village hall. As amended.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, that's up to the folks. Okay. Next up? All right, next up, we have consider approval contract award to Kendig Keith Collaborative not to exceed $20,000 for the code of ordinance reorganization and authorize the administrator to execute the agreement contingent upon attorney review.
So this is an item that we discussed at the work session. Y'all have already seen the proposal, the agreement was attached in your agenda packets. Just wanted to let you know that when we initially discussed this, it was proposed at $26,000. We were able to negotiate it down to $20,000, and we will be changing over our codification services with this, which is what we put into the budget. Just wanted to let you know that we were able to get it down under $6,000.
Thank you for doing that.
Great job.
Yeah, great job.
Very good.
All right, so you need a motion to approve that? Okay. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve the contract award to Kendig Keith Collaborative not to exceed $20,000 for the code of ordinance reorganization and authorize the administrator to execute the agreement contingent upon attorney review. And switch code host to N code plus.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Looking forward to new business. G, discussion consideration petition in a motion to receipt, remove Councilman Robert Epps from the Village of Marvin Village Council. This chaplain, we have you, obviously, I don't know how we want to start this and where this is coming from.
I'll just kind of go through it and keep things efficient. At the February 11th meeting, Village Council instructed me to prepare the petition and a motion and related documents to remove Councilman Robert Epps. The motion process allows Village Council to remove a member for calls. There is a process. The process includes a notice, opportunity to be heard with a hearing, and a decision made upon the evidence presented at the hearing. Before you is the petition and a motion. It starts the process. It calls for the hearing, and as drafted, it calls for the hearing at the next meeting, which would be April 7th, 2020. And as I noted with the decision, a decision is made later. This is just for you to continue the process. And the petition, it sets forth the grounds, and it alleges basically neglect and abandonment of office for failure to attend meetings since May 15th, 2019. All of the meetings are listed in the petition. I believe there are 17 of them, so there are 17 consecutive meetings. It also alleges that several meetings were canceled because you couldn't have a quorum. And then there were also, under the weird procedural rule with the ordinances and spending money, you had a quorum, but you couldn't approve some other documents, so there were other delays. And also work, workload and input weren't properly made. The reason this is so thick is the petition is supported by the affidavit of Village Clerk Barbara Blackwell, and it has all the exhibits. Those are your meeting dates, all the minutes, the, and your policy regarding your duties and obligations. There's also a summary of all the meetings met in there. And then finally, if you move forward, we'll need to adopt rules of procedure. The rules of procedure are, are in there. They're one-page. They're rather simple, but they kind of set forth the ground rules. And the other petitions and motions that we've had, that was a big part of letting everybody know what they can do, how the hearing will proceed. It'll be a quasi judicial matter, sworn witnesses, and Councilman Epps would be the respondent. He's authorized to be represented by council. However, we do have a notice provision in there. He's going to have witnesses and council there to notify us five days before the hearing. And the other rules are fairly basic with what you would normally have, but they're in writing put down, so everybody knows the process beforehand. So the next step would be for you to approve the petition. And also, we would want you to continue to instruct me and staff just to do any administrative documentation to facilitate the hearing and make sure we get it. The main thing we've got to do is make sure that Councilman Epps, if you pass this, knows of it. So we would have the petition and a motion signed, delivered, along with the rules and the affidavit. So he has a packet of all the documents. And we'll have that delivered in the normal course through delivery to the, to his address and also emailed.
But he should have this anyway, because it's in his packet.
He should.
So because this is going to be quasi judicial, we cannot talk about it with the public, correct?
You really shouldn't be talking about it, because you're going to make your decision based upon what is presented at the hearing.
So if people want information or are asking us questions, my response is going to be to direct them to the website, to this agenda packet, and they can read all of the exhibits and, and your-
The petition and a motion, it sets forth the- The petition and a motion, it sets forth the grounds and the affidavit is the documentation. And I would just say, we have not made a decision on this, but if you vote to move forward, we've decided to move forward and that's the process, but we have to have, you know, make our decision based upon the evidence presented. Right now, I anticipate the evidence presented will be the affidavit.
Okay. So, just so you guys know, quasi-judicial, we can't talk about it. We can talk about it, but...
Individually.
But we cannot, correct, but we cannot talk about it with the public.
And the meeting, and the rules...
And refer them to the website, so this will be up on the website too?
Yes, it's gonna be very...
Should be on there now, correct?
Very public.
Well, as soon as the packet, but it will be a separate document on the website.
But it's in the packet right now, so somebody's asking about it.
Right.
Because I had people ask me last night about it at planning board and I referred them to the agenda packets.
Well, for those that are only listening and don't come to our meetings and want to get this and maybe don't read our minutes, I mean, is there anything that we feel that it's imperative that we say that why, how we got to this point?
I don't think we can. It's quasi-judicial.
Well, you set it forth in the petition and that's what I outlined. And if you approve the petition, you're approving those grounds and that is failure to attend any meetings since May 15th, which is 17 consecutive, failure to take on any tasks and duties as a council member, failure to provide input, failure to take some of the workload, but most of it pertains to not coming to a meeting. And you are governed by, or the village is governed by this council.
Well, I mean, given, yeah, I mean, there's a lot to be discussed and stuff. Obviously, we can certainly wait till that goes to the hearing and we listen to it if there is any response and look at this. I know the other thing is, you know, there's, and it's not much, but there's a stipend involved. And when you talk about rules of procedure, and I don't know, we set up, we're gonna talk about that in the budget, but we didn't today.
No, we're gonna, Jaclyn and I are creating a policy. He's working on a policy and then we will put the policy to tie to the budget.
Okay.
The statute dictates when the budgets are approved and how the stipends work.
You change stipends with adoption of the budget.
Unless there's a policy.
And you're comfortable with your research and what you've done, given the circumstances, that this is the right process that...
The emotion process, yes. And I set forth in the petition that it has been recognized under governing law.
Is there case law running with this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the first thing that we need to do is adopt the petition?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the petition in a motion to remove Councilman Robert Epps from Marvin Village Council and instruct the village attorney and village clerk to prepare relevant documents and to ensure Councilman Epps is properly notified.
Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
So...
And the next thing you have is the rules that we discussed.
We need to adopt those rules.
Yep. And also the one-page rules that are in your, I kind of changed the order. I put the...
But this is not what we're doing on the 7th, correct? Or this is what we're doing on the 7th?
Yes, and those, the rules are the one-page.
So, we're having the hearing on the 7th or we're having the public hearing on the 7th?
It's not necessarily a public hearing. It is your hearing.
It's the hearing.
It is the hearing.
And is that...
And you're not gonna be here.
I'm gonna be here, I'm gonna, if the coronavirus continues, I'm supposed to be in DC, looking at schools with my son. That could get counseled. We spoke about that, spoke with Christine about it, and I'm gonna be traveling back, but I'm visiting, revisiting one of the schools.
So, you can be on the phone?
Oh, definitely.
Okay, all right, that's fine, as long as you're available to have to...
I'm gonna be on the interstate and...
Okay, or you may be here, so, okay.
Yeah, I know, I may well be here.
So, just so I get this right, from April 7th at 6:30, we're gonna have both the this, this hearing and the public hearing for...
Yes.
For changing the charter, yes.
For changing the charter.
And you can change this on page, in the second page of the motion. It's now where for you adopt the petition and conduct the hearing and I put, and conduct the hearing during its regularly scheduled meeting on April 7th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. It was just gonna go in your meeting with anything else. If y'all want to move it to a special date, time, and place, you can, but I figured it was easier as a fallback to schedule then. And I will definitely be available by phone. I'll be getting, hopefully, most of the way here by then.
Okay.
If I can, I'll swing by, but traffic in DC, I'm sure is gonna be tough.
But did you say we were gonna have another council, another council person be here?
Christine and I are gonna talk about that. I will either, I should be able to get somebody from my office to be here or I will be available on the phone the whole time, however y'all want to handle that.
Okay. All right, so we need to go over these rules, make sure we're good with them, and then approve these rules?
Yes.
Is that what I'm understanding?
And I went over them earlier, but basically, it sets forth on one page what is a typical quasi-judicial hearing rules, that statements will be under oath, that you can put time limits.
Should we do time limits now?
I wouldn't because most of the time, you want to see how many witnesses. I mean, I don't think this is gonna be a witness intense hearing.
When will it take place as far as an order of the agenda? Would it be during the beginning of the meeting or...
I think you would, you as a council would dictate that.
What does council feel about that? Because usually, we have public hearings, or things like this.
Public hearings typically go behind the consent agenda. Once you've adopted the consent agenda, then you go into the public hearings. So, they could follow suit under that same process that you already have listed.
So, go through the reports first, prove the consent agenda, and then that would be right after that, okay?
Correct.
Move on with that.
Okay. And to state again, this isn't a public hearing, this is your hearing. So, you'll have your witnesses. Your witnesses disclosed in these rules for your clerk and your administrator, unless we have more than, we're gonna disclose those five days before. But the way I look at this, most of this is about the lack of attendance.
Well, and if we're the ones making the decisions, we don't need to be the witnesses.
No, and I have that in there as well, because that came up in another case where they complained that they couldn't call in as witnesses and they didn't set it in the rules. Yeah, and they tried to make a whole legal argument about that, so I said, I described that in the rules and just said that as charge of fact, you cannot testify to eliminate that issue.
Do we want to read out the rules now or do we want to just read through them ourselves, take a few minutes, and then if anyone has any questions, what are your thoughts, council?
I mean, I'm fine reading them out loud and then that way if we've got questions.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll do it. Statements will be made under oath. Village Council reserves the right to establish time limits for testimony and argument. So, at what point do we do that?
I would do it at the beginning of the hearing if you look and...
We've got like 25 witnesses?
Yes. Now, those will be disclosed...
Five days prior.
Five days prior. I just don't, I don't anticipate that being an issue, but I think you need to reserve that right if you have 15 duplicative witnesses. Y'all don't want to be here all night. It'd be reasonable limitations.
Can they use the, what procedure they do already for public comments is a three-minute time limit or does that supersede that type of procedure?
It depends on the factual witness. Like, you wouldn't want to, the respondent should have more than three minutes.
Should we encourage those who maybe want to come and defend his position to have an affidavit for us before the meeting or something that they would want to...
He is the respondent if he wants to defend.
Then he needs to figure out how to do that. We don't need to help him.
He needs to do that.
Okay.
Because you don't want to start calling in the public. One, that can come both ways because we're supposed to disclose...
No, I'm saying is if we know that there are, if we can make it as part of the rules that say he has a couple defendants and why he would say that he should steal, that they just put it in writing that we were able to...
You're gonna want them here live.
Okay.
I think, but he's supposed to disclose them five days, so we have him disclosing anybody that's gonna present. But I don't think you want this open to anyone because, one, it can create a lengthy lack of control, two, he wouldn't have notice of who that may be because it can cut both ways.
And that five days helps us based on his response of where we're having this meeting too, I would assume.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Keep that in mind for the April 7th when you're scheduling.
I already have.
Okay.
The mayor shall have the authority to preserve order during the hearing. Village Council reserves the right to question any witness. Village Council may consult with the village attorney or other staff during the hearing. The respondent may be represented by an attorney during the hearing. Said attorney shall file a notice of representation with the clerk at least five days prior to the hearing. Do we need to say five business days or just five days?
I think so. It's on a Tuesday.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
Or you could do three business days. Try not to make it too far ahead because this is already less than 30 days, but you could, I was thinking five days would be that...
Thursday?
Thursday.
So, in, just to get...
Hold on, let's figure out the answer first.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, we don't have an answer yet.
So, five days is five calendar days.
Okay, so let's say, can we just change that to calendar?
Certainly. These are your rules, at least five.
Calendar.
Calendar.
I just want to be specific so it's not like, wow, I thought it was whatever. So, any place in here that says five days, it needs to be five calendar days.
Right.
You guys good, you guys okay with that?
Yes.
Due to the potential of the people coming in, should we maybe move this to the fellowship hall?
Well, that's what Joe was just saying. We should know by the witness list of how many people are maybe coming or not coming.
One between this one and the other.
My problem with that is if we change locations, all the meetings are scheduled here. If we change locations, that's a seven-day notice. So, if we want to just go ahead, just for that sake of having the meeting, is at your, at your work session, revise your meeting agenda, your meeting schedule for April the 7th to be at Banks instead of Village Hall regardless of whether we have a nod or not.
That's fine.
Because in that, that way, I'm covered and I won't have to worry about getting another notice out.
You put that on the work session to change that? Okay.
We're going to...
I'm sorry, Joe, was that your question?
Well, no, I was more, okay, so we're treading new waters here. We don't, we've never done this and I'm just logistically wondering how this works. If you're not gonna be here, is, are we questioning the respondent or are we just sending back saying, okay, present your case? I mean, yes, I'm leaving it, but what am I, I mean, who's asking the questions? Usually, there's a, how does that work?
Go ahead. You have presented, you have passed, you have now passed the petition. This board has adopted it. So, y'all have alleged that that is true and supported by the affidavit. You haven't made a finding of whether or not that warrants removal, but you have found that it warrants conducting a hearing and that there's been some dereliction of duty.
Okay.
I think it is up to the respondent to come back and counter that through witnesses. Now...
So, he happens to be here at that meeting. I just opened it up after we opened that meeting and say, we're gonna now invite the respondent to respond to the facts that we've been presented and see where that goes?
Yes, because in the last sentence of the petition, it says, we set the, and we're gonna have to reopen and amend the petition to change the location, but, and it says, Councilman Epps's respondent may respond to this petition and emotion and appear at the hearing in accordance with the emotion hearing rules and procedure.
Were you reading that?
That's the last sentence.
Last sentence of the affidavit.
And we will also provide him a notice of hearing.
That's this.
Yeah, I just went ahead and prepared. That's gonna be a little different. We're gonna...
We're gonna change a little bit.
We get, and it's, in the notice of hearing, says you're invited to attend and offer any admissible evidence, an argument is fit and proper, and the hearing will be conducted with or without you in more eloquent terms. And this is a, I didn't have y'all adopt this. Y'all authorized us to...
Do the paperwork.
Do the paperwork.
Okay.
So, there'll be, and that'll be submitted in the record.
All right, so let's get through these rules and procedure, then we can ask questions and then we can go back and amend the petition.
Calendar.
Okay.
To ensure that, oh, wait.
The village shall maintain an appropriate record of the hearing.
Yes.
Okay, to ensure that hearing proceeds in orderly fashion. The petition for a motion and attached affidavits will be considered for admission and evidence. The village attorney may present and summarize the petition and a motion to Village Council at the hearing. The village may, but is not required, to receive evidence described in the petition through the village clerk and/or administrator. Any other potential witnesses must be disclosed to the respondent through his or her attorney if represented at least five calendar days prior to the hearing. The respondent will be allowed to provide relevant evidence and testimony. A witness list shall be filed with the village clerk at least five calendar days prior to the hearing. Village Council members as charge of fact cannot testify. The respondent may provide rebuttal evidence and a closing statement. Okay, so...
Should we go, after all that happened, would we go around the room and vote? I mean, basically, take a vote and each individual council would respond?
Do a motion and then have discussion.
Okay.
A motion to not or to remove and then have discussion and then call for the vote. And these rules already provide that I'll prepare an order and the mayor can sign. I like having that authority. Otherwise, you'd want that in the motion because you're gonna want to get the order out quickly to have closure on this instead of waiting for y'all to approve the order at another meeting.
And so, once we vote and if it's, whatever the, if the outcome is for removal, then that, at that point...
It's effective immediately. The rules, the last sentence and the last paragraph about the order say if you do it, you would not replace the council member for a period of 30 days. And that is to provide an opportunity for an appeal without having, without him trying to file an injunction.
So, you have appeals. Can you see any situation where he may ask for stay of any of this happening and then it brings our attorneys into this or...
It has happened before where they tried to enjoin or stop the proceedings and then it's also gone through without a hiccup. The emotion procedure dates back to English law and until somewhat recently, the last cases in North Carolina were, I think, from the, maybe the 40s. And then within the last five years, it has started up again in your scene, really on a trial level, not any appellate court decisions.
Okay. So, do we need to adopt the rules as amended? Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the emotion hearing rules and procedures as amended.
Including inserting the calendar days at each point where we're talking about five days.
Yep, as amended, yeah.
Okay. Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so I need to go back and we need to redo the...
Amend the motion.
Yeah, I need to amend my earlier motion to change the location. So, do you just want me to redo it?
I think you just said it, to make a motion to amend the approval of the petition for a motion to set the...
Location at Banks Fellowship Hall at 6:30 PM, April 7th, 2020.
During the regularly scheduled meeting.
Yeah, during the regularly scheduled meeting. Yeah, during the regularly scheduled meeting. We're gonna amend that.
Continue?
Yeah.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. We'll work on that. Next up, I have a discussion consideration of street names, I need to check Christine.
Yes, sir. So pursuant to the specs manual that was presented and approved tonight, y'all noticed the sign that was included in that, which is attached in your agenda packet, add the logo on it. So what we've done is assess the number of street signs that would be needed to change over the, the street signs that we own, and also the ones up on DOT. In your agenda packet, we've got a total list of about $10,000 to replace all village signs that are in our Powellville district that we own and DOT signs. And this is an average. Since the last meeting, I've actually contacted all of the HOAs that are listed here to see if they were interested in law sharing. We probably need to come up with some type of policy of how we were gonna do that in terms of if they had interest, would we do theirs first, or how we would do all of them, how we're gonna do that. But these are the total costs. What I'm proposing to do is to put some funding in next year's budget to replace these signs, maybe not necessarily all of them, but the ones that are willing to help participate with cost sharing, we would address those first.
Did anybody say they would be willing to do that?
Nobody's responded for, or against, yet. I think they're talking very, very towards. But we've had a lot of interest, so I feel like we will have some interest to, to help participate. So if everybody's agreeable to that, then I will continue to work on that and, and set up a plan and fit it in next year's budget.
Yeah, that's awesome. So do we need to make a motion to keep you moving on?
Nope.
That's awesome.
Do we need Rohit?
Barbie, Rohit. Sorry.
She probably won't get here the emotion there. You can action item. You gotta get it signed too.
I'm, I'm done, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So next up, we have.
Yeah, we're sorry, we're finished.
Each agenda item is a review of action items.
I'm fine.
Ms. Martin, action item was, pardon me.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
We're actually gonna, this is just, I think she put this in here just to kinda clean it up. With y'all, okay, with us, putting this in the work session, that's what I'd like to do moving forward, is just to have this in the work session so we can discuss the other projects. If that's the case, we'll just kinda table this item and put it over to.
Wait, no, I got, I got.
No, I, I, I think it was put in there because Mayor Proton Vandenberg asked for it to be here so that they could be reviewed and then determined on how, how we're gonna proceed with reviewing it moving forward. Because historically, that's been sent to council on a quarterly basis with everything, all the action items on there. And then it's, it was, gave you an idea of what was, what was in process, what was completed. And then the ones that were completed, we just kinda kept there and held and.
Can we like, can we put, can we kinda lump them together, like the in-process ones? Like I'd rather see like, all the stuff that's in process, all the stuff that's like on a future agenda, all the stuff that's been completed, kind of the stuff that's in process, like at the top.
Yes, yes. It was just put like this, because I wanted to see what kinda format you wanted, so we could do that.
That would be easier for me, cause in that way I can be like, okay, like where are we with this? What's going on here? And then we can just kinda keep moving it down, you know, the list. And then I would like to add a couple things, the roundabout lights, if we can find out about that, and then just put trash on there, okay, as, as a placeholder to keep following up on the trash. I didn't see that.
I could be mistaken. And trash?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, and I, and I would actually like to do this every meeting.
Every meeting?
I would, I would, even if it's just to look at, you know, on our own and be like, oh, great, that looks good. Or then if we have questions about it, then we're.
Okay. So all the ones that are completed will be at the bottom of the page, and then all the in-process will filter out.
Yeah, that'd be good.
And to add to, to the list, I have discussed outside agency funding policy at the works, work session. Staff will research waiving bank fees for village accounts.
Oh, yeah.
Discussion regarding adding an additional officer at the work session. Send out planning board vacancy to, on social media next door. And then revise council meeting schedule at the work session agenda, and then revise and sign the emotion documentation.
Awesome. And Barbie, if we start getting applications for planning board, can you just start sending them out whenever you get them? And not wait till?
Right now, I haven't gotten any.
Okay, but just not wait for a meeting? That way we can like call and talk to these people and not?
Do you want me to send them out as, as a packet? Or do you, if I, if I have one and then I get another one the next day?
If you have one, send it out, yeah, just whenever you get one, send them.
I'll just pepper your email with.
Yes, please.
Applications.
Hopefully, that'd be good. Me talking too much?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I'm done.
That's all right.
Yep, I'm good.
Barbie, any other?
Else?
That's it.
Okay.
Unless, unless I missed something.
Next up is council comments. Anyone wanna volunteer to start?
I'm good, thanks staff. I'm thanks staff.
Thank you, staff. I love it, I love it.
I'm very proud as a part of the council and being a new council person. Very proud of the strides that we are making towards accomplishing things that are coming in front of us and things that we're looking ahead in our goals. I, we're doing a good job. We hit the, I know Jamie and I, being new, it seems like we just hit the floor running. And, you know, I'm really proud of what we're accomplishing just in a couple of months. So I'm really, thank you, staff, for making that all happen, because you grease the skids for us, you make it easy.
Thank you. Jamie?
Yeah, I kinda mirror what Bob was saying. Thank you for all your hard work. I mean, this is, there's a lot that you put in front of us, but you make it really easy for us. Happy birthday to Barbie.
Thank you. Appreciate my little text yesterday. And you, Joe, thank you for my little text.
So, but I look forward to what's, what we have up ahead as well. So thanks, but thanks to staff. Thanks to Rohit, I know he's not on the, I know he's not on the phone, Rohit as well, and all, planning board and everyone. Good job, great job.
Thank you, Jamie. Couple things. First off, another belated happy birthday, but we wished you that yesterday. So we got through that meeting in record time, which I like saying, you know, it just seems like forever, but apologize for missing the last meeting. It was, it was truly just a flu. The good news was it wasn't the coronavirus or anything like that, so at least I wasn't tested for it.
T-dose. That was 14, over 14 days ago.
But I will say, it did knock me out for a while. We were able to make up our trip, just got back to Bozeman, Montana. And again, another reason to keep it less density, because you see places like that, you just, you know, you just love it. And I think that's what draws people to Marvin, the fact that we don't have this high density. Thank you, staff, for all your work in putting this together, Chaplin, you included, for the work you've done in the background and what we've asked you to do for this. I agree with you guys that we, we're moving things along because, and it's not, we're not necessarily agreeing on everything, but we're moving things along and, and, and that's what a government should be doing. And I think once the people see that, I'd like to, especially with planning board, they're on point. Our meeting yesterday was a very good, concise meeting. Specific shout out to John Jones and Rohit that are at the, what is it called again?
North Carolina Main Street Conference.
Main Street Conference, that they're excited, they seem pretty excited just in their first day there, what the information they're getting. So, but, and I just appreciate the, the ability to meet with these, and I think we're having another meeting with PR and G here shortly, so.
Thursday morning.
Thursday at 10:00.
Looking forward to that. But that being said, and with all of us, the concerns of this coronavirus is, is taking, starting to take effect here in Marvin and North Carolina. So I just, I guess, I guess encourage all to take the precautions they feel they need to. And with that, I will ask to move into closed session.
I make a motion to move into closed session pursuant of NCGS 143-318.1183 to consult with the village attorney retained by the public body in order to preserve attorney-client privilege pursuant to NCGS 143-318.1185 to discuss terms for potential acquisition of real property.
Discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Can you walk her out?
You want me to start?
No.
Sure.
We're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Be good, Barbie.